Good morning. I'm going to bring this regularly scheduled meeting of the Minneapolis City Council to order. Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Warszawmi.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
Frye.
Here.
Palmisano.
Present.
Gordon.
Here.
Kano.
Here.
Reich.
Here.
Bender.
Here.
Glidden.
Here.
Yang.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Quincy.
Here.
President Johnson.
Here.
There are 13 members present.
We have all members present this morning. Next item on our agenda is adoption of the agenda, and I know we do have one amendment to the agenda. Councilmember Palmisano.
Madam Chair, I have a motion. I'd like to ask that the agenda be amended to include under new business, the introduction of an ordinance amending Title 21 of the Minneapolis Code of Ordinances relating to interim ordinances by adding a new Chapter 590. You have that up on the dais, and we've just put it out front. Second.
Okay. Councilmember Palmisano has made a motion to amend the agenda to add an item under new business. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Any other amendments to the agenda?
Move the agenda.
Seeing none, motion to move the agenda as amended is made. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next item is acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting and adjourn session of February 21st, 2014.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have referral of petitions and communications and reports of the city officers to proper committees and departments.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Now, we go to our regular committee reports, and the first is Committee of the Whole, and that committee is chaired by the Council Vice President Elizabeth Glidden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have one item for approval today. This is regarding Southwest Light Rail Transit Project, and this was passage of a resolution approving submission of comments to the Metropolitan Council on their recent studies related to the Southwest Light Rail Transit Project. And I'll just note, it says Councilmember Palmisano there, but I think she was on another item, so... And I've moved that item.
Okay. Councilmember Glidden has moved the Committee of the Whole report, which is the Southwest Light Rail Transit Project Resolution. Any discussion on that item? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Warszawmi.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Community Development and Regulatory Services Report. With that committee's chair, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Community Development and Regulatory Services Committee is bringing forward 13 items for approval this morning. Item number one is the normal liquor business gambling license applications. Item number two is denying the renewal of an on-sale license for Champion Saloon and Eatery. Item number three, I'll be moving to revoke, this is the rental license revocation at 3511 Colfax Avenue North. Your agenda is noted to move forward without recommendation, and the motion will be to revoke. Item number four are the changes we're making with regard to proposed amendments for Block Ease redevelopment, now referred to as Mayo Clinic Square. Item four is approving a stipulated agreement for a rental license. I'm sorry, that's item five. Item number six is adding people to the Housing Board of Appeals. Seven is an amendment to the MOU with the county on the Hennepin Health Systems property. Item eight is a DC group expansion. Item nine is making a change to the Target Center Arena Design Group. Item 10 is adding the mayor to the Park Committee. Item 11 is moving forward on our Round Three funding for Green Homes North. Item number 12 is changes to our rehab support program, and item 13 is a low bid on cutting of nuisance grass. With that, I'll move items 1 through 13, including item 3 being moved forward with revocation.
Councilmember Goodman has moved the Community Development and Regulatory Services Report, including on item 3, a motion to revoke the license at 3511 Colfax. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Warszawmi.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Community Development and Regulatory Services Report. With that committee's chair, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Community Development and Regulatory Services Committee is bringing forward 13 items for approval this morning. Item number one is the normal liquor business gambling license applications. Item number two is denying the renewal of an on-sale license for Champion Saloon and Eatery. Item number three, I'll be moving to revoke, this is the rental license revocation at 3511 Colfax Avenue North. Your agenda is noted to move forward without recommendation, and the motion will be to revoke. Item number four are the changes we're making with regard to proposed amendments for Block Ease redevelopment, now referred to as Mayo Clinic Square. Item four is approving a stipulated agreement for a rental license. I'm sorry, that's item five. Item number six is adding people to the Housing Board of Appeals. Seven is an amendment to the MOU with the county on the Hennepin Health Systems property. Item eight is a DC group expansion. Item nine is making a change to the Target Center Arena Design Group. Item 10 is adding the mayor to the Park Committee. Item 11 is moving forward on our Round Three funding for Green Homes North. Item number 12 is changes to our rehab support program, and item 13 is a low bid on cutting of nuisance grass. With that, I'll move items 1 through 13, including item 3 being moved forward with revocation.
Councilmember Goodman has moved the Community Development and Regulatory Services Report, including on item 3, a motion to revoke the license at 3511 Colfax. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Warszawmi.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Transportation and Public Works Report, with that committee's chair, Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. We have four items on the agenda. The first is the passage of a resolution accepting the donation of a used school bus from the Minneapolis School Board to the fire department. The second is authorizing the lease of Hennepin Healthcare Systems, Inc., for the use of space within Fire Stations 15 and 22 for ambulance storage. The third is acceptance of grant funds of $27,800 in the execution of agreement with the Minnesota Homeland Security and Emergency Management for the Police Department Bomb Disposal Unit, and the passage of a resolution approving appropriation. And the fourth item is authorizing a contract agreement with the Minnesota Timberwolves with $17,000 for the police department to provide bomb security services for basketball at the Target Center, and passage of a resolution approving such appropriation. And with that, I will move all four items.
Councilmember Yang has moved the Public Safety Civil Rights and Emergency Management Report. Anyone want to pull anything off or discussion on any of those items? Councilmember Glidden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to comment on item number three.
Okay, why don't you go ahead?
Thank you very much. I just wanted to note, this is a really significant report that has come forward, our Energy Pathways Study, and it was highly anticipated. I think the consultants that worked on this report really had an aggressive timeline that we had directed them to meet, because the anticipation is that the information from this report will help inform our negotiations with our utility companies and how we work on that. I'll note, too, that the consultants were directed by the council not to come back with a status quo recommendation, meaning that their recommendations would seek ways that we could go above and beyond ways that we do things today, and they have really complied with that. It's a very meaty report, and just want to recommend to folks to take a look, and I'm looking forward to working with our partners and how we move forward to see what we're able to implement through our negotiations with our utility companies.
Any further discussion on the report? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Warszawmi.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee, with that committee's chair, Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Madam President. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee is bringing six items forward for approval today. The first is to authorize execution of a cooperative agreement with the Metropolitan Airports Commission and the Counties of Anoka, Carver, Dakota, Hennepin, Ramsey Scott, Washington, and the City of Bloomington, authorizing a regional distribution node on the MAC property of federal stockpiles of medical materials in the event of a public health emergency. Item two is authorizing execution of a site agreement with the Minnesota Campus Compact to act as a host site for a college health corps, Amerkor, Vista Volunteer to work on youth violence prevention programming. We're also requesting early signature by the mayor on that. Item three, we received the report, the long-awaited report of the Energy Pathways Study, and we are directing staff to pursue the clean energy agreements and all necessary franchise agreements consistent with the study recommendations, and also to recommend changes to the 2014 legislative agenda consistent with the study recommendations. Item four is dealing with our Minnesota Climate Action Plan, I mean Minneapolis, sorry, two-year priorities, and we're directing sustainability staff to work with other departments and report back to the council committees on progress with future decision points, and also to report annually on progress towards emissions reduction goals and implementation. Also, to work with the Community Environmental Advisory Commission to develop a long-term carbon emission reductions goal, as well as the short and midterm goals. And also to amend Strategy Four of the Climate Action Plan Strategies Matrix, so that we will include reviewing and enhancing the commercial recycling ordinance as well as enforcing it. Item five is comments on the MPCA compost rule changes. This was also referred to Transportation and Public Works, where I believe the same comments were approved. And item six is authorizing an increase not to exceed amounts for the following contracts to finalize projects through contract termination on December 31st, 2015, with the Minnesota Visiting Nurse Agency, Neighborhood Health Source, and the Family Partnership. And this is just a... We set the maximum amount that may be expended that time through these three partners. And I will stand for any questions.
Councilmember Gordon?
And move approval of all items.
Okay, moved all items on the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Report. Anyone want to pull anything off or discussion on any of those items? Councilmember Glidden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to comment on item number three.
Okay, why don't you go ahead?
Thank you very much. I just wanted to note, this is a really significant report that has come forward, our Energy Pathways Study, and it was highly anticipated. I think the consultants that worked on this report really had an aggressive timeline that we had directed them to meet, because the anticipation is that the information from this report will help inform our negotiations with our utility companies and how we work on that. I'll note, too, that the consultants were directed by the council not to come back with a status quo recommendation, meaning that their recommendations would seek ways that we could go above and beyond ways that we do things today, and they have really complied with that. It's a very meaty report, and just want to recommend to folks to take a look, and I'm looking forward to working with our partners and how we move forward to see what we're able to implement through our negotiations with our utility companies.
Any further discussion on the report? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Warszawmi.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Transportation and Public Works Report, with that committee's chair, Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. We have four items on the agenda. The first is the passage of a resolution accepting the donation of a used school bus from the Minneapolis School Board to the fire department. The second is authorizing the lease of Hennepin Healthcare Systems, Inc., for the use of space within Fire Stations 15 and 22 for ambulance storage. The third is acceptance of grant funds of $27,800 in the execution of agreement with the Minnesota Homeland Security and Emergency Management for the Police Department Bomb Disposal Unit, and the passage of a resolution approving appropriation. And the fourth item is authorizing a contract agreement with the Minnesota Timberwolves with $17,000 for the police department to provide bomb security services for basketball at the Target Center, and passage of a resolution approving such appropriation. And with that, I will move all four items.
Councilmember Yang has moved the Public Safety Civil Rights and Emergency Management Report. Anyone want to pull anything off or discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Warszawmi.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Transportation and Public Works Report, with that committee's chair, Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The Transportation and Public Works Committee forward seven items for approval today. Item one is the St. Anthony Bridge over the BNSF Northtown Yard Project. Approve the bridge layout, realignment of California Street Northeast and Main Street Northeast, passage resolution designating the locations of improvements of the proposed project, and receive the cost estimate to direct the city engineer to prepare proposed special assessments against those projects at the resurfacing assessment rate, and a public hearing is to be set at April 15th, 2014. Item two is the Lowry Hill East Resurfacing Project. Again, passage resolution for the improvements, and to receive the cost estimate and prepare a proposed special assessments against the benefit of properties. That public hearing will also be April 15th, 2014. Item three is the Sixth Street Municipal State Aid Variance Request. Item four is the Nicholas Central Modern Street Prep Project, and that's authorize an amendment to the existing contract with URS Corporation to complete additional pre-project development tasks for that project in addition to the amount not to exceed $357,000. Funding is available with the current project budget. Item five is the Bridge Number Nine Pier Three Repairs, authorize execution of a temporary construction agreement with the University of Minnesota regarding the activities and the assessments on the vicinity of the Project Nine, which goes over the Mississippi River. The following two items are referred reports to the Ways and Means Committee. Item six is the 51st Avenue Street Resurfacing Project. Passage resolution ordering the work to proceed in adopting the special assessments. Passage resolution question the Board of Investment and Taxation to issue and sell assessment bonds for the project. And item seven is accept a low bid of Cernan Construction Incorporated for stormwater pond dredging. And councilmembers, an amendment to item six has been distributed to extend the repayment period for the assessment against the property located at 5100 Thomas Avenue North from five to seven years. With that amendment, I forward all seven items for approval, Madam President.
Councilmember Reich has moved the Transportation and Public Works Report, including a motion to extend, excuse me, to extend the repayment, the payment timeframe on 5100 Thomas Avenue North from five to seven years for the assessment. Any discussion on any of those items? Councilmember Yang?
Thank you, Madam President. Number six out, just briefly for discussion.
Okay, why don't you go ahead then? Go ahead.
Thank you. You know, we got a recommendation from the Public Works Department with regards to this piece, and one of the things that they did was to extend the period from five years to seven years for this specific property, 5100 Thomas Avenue North, for Mr. Strand and his partner. But in this situation, there are two other properties that are affected by this, and you know, my understanding is that one of the properties is an elderly woman or an elderly person that would need that, but she did not, or he did not make that request. And I'd like to, you know, make a motion with regards to adding those two properties to this extension of the five-year to seven-year payment plan.
Okay. Councilmember Yang, we don't have the exact addresses, so... Pardon me? Move to the end of the agenda?
Okay.
Okay, we can do that. Let's move that, your motion, then, to the end of the agenda. We'll ask Public Works to get the other two properties that are on the even side of Thomas Avenue there that have those extraordinary assessments, get those addresses so we can address that. Otherwise, the rest of the Transportation and Public Works Report is in front of us. Councilmember Reich, did you have?
Madam President, just, so just for clarification, we will be approving all items except for six, which will hold to the end.
Yeah, we can do it that way.
Yeah, I think it's just cleaner.
Okay. Yep. So all items on the Transportation and Public Works Report are in front of you, with the exception of item six, which will move to the end of the agenda. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Warszawmi.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Ways and Means Budget Report, or excuse me, Ways and Means Report, with that committee's chair, Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam President. The Transportation and Public Works Committee will bring forward 19 items this morning. The first two items are considering Mayor Hodges' nomination and the Executive Committee's reappointments for Patrick Todd as the city assessor, for Ann Susan Segal as city attorney for two-year terms. The third item is authorize and execute a one-year agreement with Hennepin County Department of Community Corrections for a full-time probation officer to provide active supervision of chronic offenders. The fourth item is the approval of a resolution establishing the 2014 Minneapolis Board of Appeal and Equalization and appointing qualified individuals. The fifth item is the list of city positions subject to a statement of economic interest filing requirements. Items six, seven, and eight seek approval of resolutions accepting several gifts for travel-related expenses and attending conferences. Items nine, 10, and 11 are related to the Convention Center and the Target Center renovation, accepting a low bid of Vance, Terrazzo, and Tile Company for an estimated expenditure of $188,000 for materials at the Convention Center for the visitor information area, accepting low responsive bids for total estimated expenditures for Convention Center construction projects that are underway from Messenger Construction Company, KMH Erectors, and Elliott Contracting Corporation, Empire House. Item 11 is authorizing the release of the RFP for Architect and Engineering Design Services for the Target Center renovation project. Items 12 and 13, from the Finance Department, Property Services Division, are accepting a low bid of JPMI Construction Company for Fire Stations Five and Seven Improvement Projects and the 2013 Fourth Quarter Gift Acceptance Resolution for gifts to the City of Minneapolis valued under $15,000. Items 14, 15, and 16, if Information Technology Department brings forward actions related to applicant tracking software with NeoGov, and with Automon LLC for a three-year contract extension, and support of the Practice Manager Software Program for case management with Power Team, and support for Microsoft Dynamics Customer Relations Management System for support services for neighborhood and community relations. Seventeenth item is the approval of a resolution for Mayor Hodges and Diane Halsey to participate in a 2014 education conference. Items 18 and 19, referred to by the Executive Committee and are for recommendation of 2014 salary adjustments, schedule rates for appointed employees and non-represented employees of the City of Minneapolis. I'd like to move all 19 items. Thank you.
Councilmember Quincy has moved the entire Ways and Means Report. Anyone want to pull anything off? Any discussion on any of those items? Councilmember Gordon?
Yes, I would like to comment on item number two.
Okay. Go back on my... On item two. Councilmember Gordon?
Thank you very much, Madam President. And this is on the reappointment of the city attorney, and this is something that I posed at Executive Committee and didn't have an opportunity or didn't choose to take the opportunity to speak there. And I speak now primarily because I think that it's an obligation and a commitment that I should have that I explain my reasons for my vote, not to reappoint the city attorney, and also in the hopes that it could actually improve the way we work in the future. And I'll try to keep brief. As you can imagine, this is one of the more difficult things to deal with. It's been rare that I've opposed a reappointment, and in this case, it's particularly difficult because there's so much that I admire about the city attorney and the work that she's done and the work that her department has done. I've many times seen the skill, and I think the leadership has been very strong. I think it's been brought up. There's been cases ranked choice voting, the pension efforts, where clearly the work has been outstanding. My concerns are in two areas secondarily. I have a concern about the way we handle free speech issues, peaceful protests. I actually think that civil disobedience and protest has a really critical role to play in our democracy, and I think it's a really tricky and delicate balance of how we protect those rights and also balance it with the property rights. And I'm concerned sometimes there may be a pattern where the free speech is getting stifled, where maybe it doesn't have to be. But that's not my primary concern, and I think everybody's probably pretty aware at this point that my primary concern has to do with the Viking Stadium decision that was made. I wish that that had been handled better. I think it's really important, especially when we have really difficult and challenging decisions to make, that we get the best, most neutral, most detached legal advice that we possibly can, and I'm not sure that we got that in that instance. And I think there's probably a lot of blame to go around about that and how that happened. In the end, I disagreed with the city's attorney, city attorney's decision, particularly about the city resource issue and as the use of the sales tax, a city resource, and should it be subject to the charter provisions to go forward for a referendum.
... to a statement of economic interest filing requirements. Items six, seven, and eight seek approval of resolutions accepting several gifts for travel-related expenses and attending conferences. Items nine, 10, and 11 are related to the convention center and the Target Center renovation, accepting a low bid of Vance, Terrazzo, and Tile Company for an estimated expenditure of $188,000 for materials at the convention center for the visitor information area, accepting low responsive bids for total estimated expenditures for convention center construction projects that are underway from Messenger Construction Company, KMH Erectors, and Elliott Contracting Corporation Empire House. Item 11 is authorizing the release of the RFP for Architect and Engineering Design Services for the Target Center renovation project. Items 12 and 13 from the Finance Department Property Services Division are accepting a low bid of JPMI Construction Company for fire stations five and seven improvement projects and the 2013 fourth quarter gift acceptance resolution for gifts to the city of Minneapolis valued under $15,000. Items 14, 15, and 16 with Information Technology Department brings forward actions related to applicant tracking software with NeoGov and with Automon LLC for a three-year contract extension and support of the Practice Manager Software Program for case management with Power Team and support for Microsoft Dynamics Customer Relations Management System for support services for neighborhood and community relations. Seventeenth item is the approval of resolution for Mayor Hodges and Diane Halsey to participate in a 2014 education conference. Items 18 and 19 referred to by the Executive Committee enter for recommendation of 2014 salary adjustments, schedule rates for appointed employees, and non-represented employees of the city of Minneapolis. I'd like to move all 19 items. Thank you.
Councilmember Quincy has moved the entire Ways and Means report. Anyone want to pull anything off? Any discussion on any of those items? Councilmember Gordon.
Yes, I would like to comment on item number two.
Okay. Go back on my... On item two. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Madam President. And this is on the reappointment of the city attorney, and this is something that I opposed at Executive Committee and didn't have an opportunity or didn't choose to take the opportunity to speak there. And I speak now primarily because I think that it's an obligation and a commitment that I should have that I explained my reasons for my vote not to reappoint the city attorney and also in the hopes that it could actually improve the way we work in the future. And I'll try to keep brief. As you can imagine, this is one of the more difficult things to deal with. It's been rare that I've opposed a reappointment. And in this case, it's particularly difficult because there's so much that I admire about the city attorney and the work that she's done and the work that her department has done. I've many times seen the skill, and I think the leadership has been very strong. I think it's been brought up. There's been cases of ranked choice voting, the pension efforts where clearly the work has been outstanding. My concerns are in two areas secondarily. I have a concern about the way we handle free speech issues, peaceful protests. I actually think that civil disobedience and protest has a really critical role to play in our democracy, and I think it's a really tricky and delicate balance of how we protect those rights and also balance it with the property rights. And I'm concerned sometimes there may be a pattern where the free speech is getting stifled where maybe it doesn't have to be. But that's not my primary concern, and I think everybody's probably pretty aware at this point that my primary concern has to do with the Viking Stadium decision that was made. I wish that that had been handled better. I think it's really important, especially when we have really difficult and challenging decisions to make, that we get the best, most neutral, most detached legal advice that we possibly can. And I'm not sure that we got that in that instance. And I think there's probably a lot of blame to go around about that and how that happened. In the end, I disagreed with the city attorney's decision, particularly about the city resource issue and as the use of the sales tax, a city resource, and should it be subject to the charter provisions to go forward for a referendum. I remain convinced to this day that that interpretation was incorrect. There was some validation with that when Hennepin County District Court Judge Philip Bush presented an alternative view, and I think it's an alternative view that it really would have been helpful for us all to have in December and January of 2011 and 2012 when we first saw the proposal and we were first moving forward with this. I'm hoping that as we go forward in the future, that we can actually do a better job, I think, maybe of detaching sometimes the political pressures from the professional advice that we need. I think this is actually something that goes across departments and across the whole city here. I think for us on the council to do our work, we need to somehow divorce the political pressures in our decisions from the recommendations we get from our staff. And in the instance of the stadium, at least there was the appearance that this was clouded by significant political pressure from the governor down, and I think that that was unfortunate. So I'm... My way of kind of dealing with those two concerns is not to lend my vote to support the reappointment. I actually have a lot of mixed feelings about it. It's certainly a tough call, and I actually fully expect the city attorney to be reappointed. So that makes it even a little more challenging why we'd even bring up these issues. But my hope is that by having this discussion and having this discussion now, we'll move forward better in the future. I'm actually looking forward to working with the city attorney on many issues, I have to tell you. Youth diversion issues, domestic violence, some of these things. The attorney's office has been a great partner. I also enjoy sitting at the dais next to the city attorney and getting some words of wisdom along the way here. So I think that there's a personal relationship here that I know that we will go forward on should this reappointment go forward, which I fully expect. This has happened in the past for me. I did not vote to reappoint the police chief at one point, and we were able to prove that we could go on after that, be professionals, and move forward. It's also not easy to go against the mayor's appointment, but in that instance, I also went against a mayoral appointment, and then the mayor then, and I went on and worked very well together in the future, and I fully intend and look forward to doing that in this case as well.
Councilmember Canno.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, Councilmember Gordon, thank you for sharing your thoughts and for representing the values of your ward. I feel inclined to speak now because I know that folks in my ward have come to testify and have shared their concerns about this reappointment. For the record, I will be voting for the reappointment of Susan Segal today, and I will be doing that because I want to be able to work with her for the next two years to ensure that we are uplifting freedom of speech and that we are valuing the folks in our communities who are trying to keep people in their homes, who are trying to make sure that our neighborhoods stay connected and thriving. So I appreciate the spirit and the voice that our community members have brought to the table in ensuring that these issues of social justice, equity, and inclusion are uplifted by the city. I do not feel like I need to hold anyone hostage to the Viking Stadium decision. I think that was of the previous council, and I will not drag that into this particular decision for myself or for our ward residents. We have a lot of work to do. I want to be able to work with folks currently on these issues, and so I do value a lot the National Lawyers Guild letter that we got, raising some concerns about some of the decisions that our city staff are making. And I just want to say that I'm going to be vigilant of those issues in the next two years, and I hope to build relationships with all the other council members and with the city attorney to make sure that we can address those to the fullest extent under my leadership now here as a new council member. So thank you.
Councilmember Glidden.
Thanks, Madam Chair. And I did get a chance to speak in our Ways and Means Committee in support of Susan Segal, so I won't repeat everything that I said there, but I just wanted to take this moment to again express how proud I am to support Susan Segal and just how amazing that I think she has been in her representation of the city and the way that she has benefited us through her stellar reputation, through her great relationships with her peers, and through her just absolutely sharp, amazing skills as a lawyer. One of the things that was brought up in some of the testimony at Ways and Means was something that seems so long ago now, but it was the ranked choice voting work. And it was very shortly after Susan had come to the city of Minneapolis that she became embroiled in our work to support the will of the voters in a challenge that was made to ranked choice voting that went all the way up to the Minnesota Supreme Court. And this was an issue, frankly, that was... We were under the gun. There were some time pressures around this, too. She took on that issue. She realized how important it was to really involve herself personally in ensuring that the will of the voters was protected, that the city of Minneapolis was protected, and we are really so lucky to have a fantastic decision from the Minnesota Supreme Court, frankly, that is due to her stellar leadership and amazing talent. As well, on the pension issue, which was another issue that I worked on very closely with Ms. Segal. It was her relook at our legal strategy that ended up benefiting the city, having us go back and reassert more aggressively our position on behalf of the city and our residents that was then allowed us to be able to negotiate, get state legislative changes, and come to a result that I believe really benefited both the pensioners and the residents of Minneapolis. And it's not often that you can find a way to find benefit to all stakeholders in really what was a tremendously divisive, longstanding issue that was costing the city of Minneapolis millions and millions of dollars. And we are in the position that we are today due to Susan's leadership. I also want to say that I've had an opportunity to have many issues, frankly, involving free speech and involving work with the community on sensitive protest issues around homes in the ward that I represent. And these are some of these issues where you need to know that you have someone that you can turn to to assist. And it is Susan Segal that worked with our police department to come up with a procedure that has been made public, that I believe is a more fair procedure that ensures that we are not involving our police officers in what are civil disputes that have not been fully litigated to the end, and to also have an approach that respects the rights of people around their homes and their free speech rights. And so I guess I will say from my personal experience, Susan goes above and beyond, but also she maintains always her integrity and her independence. And I think those are also essential qualities in our city attorney that we need to know that she is going to share her opinion and she is going to have independence in forming that opinion. And I believe that she does that. She has done that in my experience, and I'm so proud to support her.
Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. I had not intended to speak, but I heard a comment that I took offense to. So I will just say this. I want to say on the record that I will be voting no on this reappointment. But, you know, I'm going to say this statement, and it's going to sound like a double negative, but this is what I heard. I want to say the no vote doesn't mean that I will not want to work with the city attorney. I absolutely want to, and I think for the committee that I chair, Public Safety, we need to have a good relationship with the city attorney. And so, you know, I just think that, you know, in terms of these votes, you know, sometimes we say certain things that just, you know, really don't mean what we want to say. In this situation, you know, I heard that, you know, a vote like this means, you know, better relationship in the future. Well, I'd like to say, you know, a yes or a no vote should just mean a good relationship in the future anyway. And so with that being said, thank you.
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. I first want to thank the mayor for this appointment, this reappointment, and thank Mayor Iback for making this initial appointment those many years ago. Susan Segal I have known for many, many years. In fact, I recall meeting her when her late mother, the famous Gloria Segal, a champion of progressives and the downtrodden in our community, was in the legislature more than 25 years ago. And Susan grew up in a family of those who believed in public service, and that is what she has continued in her career, to be a public servant. From working at the Hennepin County Attorney's Office to coming to manage one of the largest public firm of lawyers in the state of Minnesota, she has been an inspiration to so many. I'll note the large number of women she has hired and mentored in the city attorney's department. The number of people who apply for positions in the city attorney's division, when we have two openings, we could have 100 people applying. People who have worked in private law firms around our region who want to come and work with Susan and Peter and their leadership team. I think the work that she has done on a variety of issues is over... is not anywhere near as important as the management that she has provided to that department and the amazing lawyers who work in that division every day, speaking up on behalf of our city on a variety of civil and criminal matters. I think that this is one of the best choices we could make from a person with a long personal family history of public service in our community, and she could be working anywhere else, making 10 times the money and not dealing with half of the grief that she has to deal with here. So I am just... Susan, I am proud that you've agreed to continue in this job. I will be there to support you. I might not always agree with you, and I might not always agree with your legal opinions, but I respect where they come from, and I respect who you are as a person, and I'm proud to have the opportunity to work with you.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you all for considering this today. You know, if Susan Segal had just come in and managed the department and hired some of the best legal talent in town and made sure that they succeeded and thrived, it would have been enough. If she had only come in and made sure that we had one of the best results records of any law firm in town on both the civil side and the criminal side, it would have been enough. But in addition to that, Susan Segal has also been incredibly forward-thinking, innovative, creative, finding ways to reduce and prevent crime in the city of Minneapolis. The Domestic Violence Partnership Prosecution Program has been... is a nationwide model. The work on youth violence prevention has been extraordinary. The Downtown 100 Program, helping reduce livability and livability crime in downtown Minneapolis by 70%, 27% citywide by diverting folks away from legal, you know, the legal process and instead getting them the services and the housing that they need. Those are huge. Having that kind of innovation, creativity, and forward-thinking in a city attorney is not something every city gets, but our city has benefited from for years. People look to us from around the country because we are doing so well, and from our city attorney's office. If she had done all those things, it would have been enough. But in addition to that, she knows the value of partnership. She has got... been able to get these things done because she knows how to work with the community, with stakeholders, with us. She has just been an extraordinary leader inside the city and with the community and around the world and around this nation in particular, and I am just very gratified that Ms. Segal has been willing to spend a chunk of her career here in Minneapolis. I'm gratified that she's willing to spend another chunk of her career here in Minneapolis, and I urge you to support her for city attorney.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'm just going to support my colleagues and the mayor in their recommendation for Ms. Segal. And, you know, looking back, you know, when you've been here a while, you sit and think back, you know, who you've worked with in these different departments as these appointments come forward. And, you know, we had a really fine city attorney in our... in my first terms here, Mr. Heffron, and, you know, I look back on some of the things that he led us into, and I think, you know, his... probably his strongest and most important, maybe he wouldn't agree with me, is some of the airport litigation that we did and the fine results that we got for our citizens through that. That takes a strategic thinker and a... an aggressive city attorney, and that's the qualities that I see in Susan. I think that she has been outstanding on issues that are really important to this city, in particularly, you know, the ones that come to mind are the pensions, this domestic violence. When we look at the number of police calls, and particularly for someone like me who represents part of North Minneapolis, that's a huge proportion of the police calls that we get in our neighborhoods. And to have the results that we have, which, you know, protect not only the community but individual families and individual persons in the work that we do is really remarkable. And Susan, you know, the accolades from across the legal community, across our business community, across our citizens, you know, we have city attorneys. It's a remarkable thing when city attorneys sit at community meetings and are available to the community and help them understand the legal system that sometimes is part... that's really hard to understand. People focus everything on the police department, and they don't always understand that that's sort of the beginning of the criminal justice system, the police department. But when you have the city attorney and their representative sitting with community members talking about, you know, how something proceeds through the criminal justice system, having a name to call, having someone to help them navigate through the system, Susan has led that charge to make sure that the city attorney's office is available to every member of this community. One of the things that I've always sort of chided her for is she's very modest. You know, we have, as the mayor... I think it was the mayor or Councilmember Goodman said, some of the best results, both in our criminal arena and our civil arena, for winning trials, for conviction rates of any city in this country. And I attribute that leadership to her and the fine staff that she works with and manages. And it is a huge department as well, really, really great individuals. And she's managed some significant change in that department where people have left and gone on to judgeships in our community in remarkable ways that we hadn't seen in years prior to this. So I attribute that to her leadership, and I'm just delighted, as someone said before, that she's agreed to stay on with us and that the mayor has moved her name forward. So I thank everybody that will be supporting her today and look forward to working with her for the next four years. Clerk will call the roll. And that is on the Ways and Means budget report, so the entire report. Ways and Means report, excuse me.
Councilmember Worszami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye on all items, no on number two.
Canno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye on all items, no on number two.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes on the report except for item number two, which has 11 ayes and two nays.
Those items are adopted. Congratulations to our charter department heads. Next, we have zoning and planning with that committee's chair, Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. We have just one item to forward from zoning and planning committee. This is a petition to rezone a property at 2924 Grand Avenue South from R2B to R3 to allow for an existing triplex, and so I will move that item.
Councilmember Bender has moved the zoning and planning report, just one item this cycle. Any discussion on those... on that item? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Worszami.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Canno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have motions, and the first is a payroll motion by Councilmember Quincy that regular payrolls of the city employees under council jurisdiction for the month of April 2014 be approved and ordered paid. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye, opposed, that carries. And next, we have a motion by Councilmember Glidden that the 2014 state legislative agenda be amended by adding language relating to the Women's Economic Security Act of 2014 in the jobs and economic development heading Minneapolis supports section. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye, opposed, that carries. Next, we have a motion by Councilmember Glidden to approve the formation of a transgender issues work group. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye, opposed, that carries. Under unfinished business, we have a motion by Councilmember Goodman, an ordinance introduction, to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to the traffic code vehicle operation for first reading and referral to the Transportation Public Works Committee prohibiting the practice of motor braking, also known as engine braking, on Interstate 394 in the city of Minneapolis. Any discussion on that ordinance introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye, opposed, that carries. Next, we have an ordinance introduction by Councilmember Glidden to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to the zoning code for first reading and referral to zoning and planning committee, allowing additional sale and display of goods outside of business establishments. Any discussion on that ordinance introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye, opposed, that carries. Under new business, we have an ordinance introduction by Councilmember Frye to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to license and business regulations for first reading and referral to the Community Development and Regulatory Services Committee, providing for recognition and regulation of peer-to-peer network community... excuse me, peer-to-peer network company transportation services. Unanimous consent is required on this motion. Any discussion on the motion under new business? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye, opposed, that carries. We've received unanimous consent. Then we have the additional item that was added in the beginning of the meeting, and it is an ordinance introduction by Councilmember Palmasano. She moves to introduce an ordinance amending Title 21 of the code relating to interim ordinance for first reading and referral to zoning and planning, adding a new chapter 590 for providing for a moratorium on the demolition, new construction, or establishment of single and two-family residential dwellings in the R1, R1A, R2, and R2B zoning districts in the neighborhoods of Linden Hills, Fulton, Armitage, Kenny, and Lynnhurst, and authorizing the Department of Community Planning and Economic Development to conduct a study to inform future development of the area and to propose such amendments to the city's official controls and other regulatory devices. This motion requires a unanimous consent. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye, opposed, that carries. Councilmember Yang, you have the 5100... or the Thomas Avenue?
Thank you, Madam President. After conferring with Public Works, I'm going to pull that in withdrawal.
Your motion?
Yes.
Okay. All right, all right. So we'll go back to Councilmember Reich's original motion then. Okay, which is... I'm going to go back on my agenda here. Councilmember Reich's original motion is to pass the resolution ordering the work to proceed and adopting special assessments for the project and passing a resolution requesting that the Board of Estimate and Taxation issue and sell assessment bonds for the project as well as the payment period for the street resurfacing assessment against the property located at 5100 Thomas be extended from five to seven years. Any discussion on that motion? Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. Just for clarification, moving forward, it's improper to make modifications to property owners unsolicited, because even though the extension can be a benefit to many, it still has a financial impact that would be improper for us to impose on one... those who didn't ask for it. So just for clarification.
Thank you, Councilmember Reich. Any further discussion then on item number six in Transportation and Public Works? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Worszami.
Aye.
Goodman. Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Canno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That item is adopted, and we have come to the end of the agenda. Any announcements? No announcements. It's a very quiet week. All right. Seeing that we have no further business, we have adjourned, a motion to adjourn would be in order, and it's a motion to adjourn to the MCDA Board of Commissioners. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. We are adjourned. Councilmember Goodman.
Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of the Minneapolis Community Development Agency for today, March 7. Mr. Casey, did you want a caller roll?
Yes, please. Commissioner Worszami.
Aye, present.
Commissioner Barbara Johnson.
Here.
Frye.
Here.
Palmasano.
Here.
Gordon.
Here.
Canno.
Here.
Reich.
Here.
Bender.
Here.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Andrew Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Chair Goodman.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
There are 13 ayes. Those items are adopted. Seeing no further business before us, we are adjourned.